I'd like to call the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Rogue Community College Board of Education. And I'll see that we have a corner president. So the first item on the agenda this evening is awards and recognition. And so I'd like to turn this over to you, Randy.
Well, it is. And as you see, we have a lot of guests with us this evening. So what I might do is I might ask Zach Jones with the Ford Family Foundation to maybe come up front and introduce himself a little bit. And what he's going to do is he is going to help us highlight and understand what the what the Ford Family Scholars are, the scholarship program is. And then what we're going to do is we're going to recognize some of our scholars. And and as you hear more from Zach, you're going to be really impressed by the program and the the quality of our recipients and what it took for them to 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 earn this this scholarship.
Thank you, President Weber. I'm Zach with the Ford Family Foundation and I in the Student Supports Manager. So I get to work directly with our scholars. I think I have the best job in the world. All right. And so we're celebrating the Class of Twenty Twenty-Five Scholars that we just selected through our selection process this past spring. Scholars, could you raise your hand if you're a new scholar? Awesome. Let's give him a round of applause. Just provide some brief remarks of who we are and just a little bit about why, why do we provide these scholarships? And you may or may not be familiar with the Ford Family Foundation. So why don't I level set us for a second? Hey, it works, April. All right. So our organization's values are rooted in those that guided our founders throughout their lives. Integrity, stewardship, respect, independence, and community. Our founders are Hallie Ford and Kenneth Ford, and they founded Roseburg Lumber Company back in the nineteen thirties. And through the their work that they did and the communities that they served, they built what is now today multinational company Roseburg Forest Products. And through that work that they created the Ford Family Foundation in the nineteen nineties. And the first program that they started was the Ford Scholars Program, which is the antecedent, if you will, to today with our Ford Scholarship Programs, which I'll go into more detail just a little bit. April asked me a question. Why would Mr. Ford and Mrs. Ford want to fund scholarships for students? And you think back to the days when Mr. Ford was a student growing up, he actually attended Oregon State University, but he had to drop out to support his family after one term. And through that experience and then seeing the families that supported his mills, he wanted to get back to his community. And so he started the scholarship programs. And when I think about a Ford Scholar, I think about this quote that Kenneth Ford was known for. There's no elevator to success. You have to take the stairs. And when I think about our new scholars and really all scholars, I see a bunch of stair takers in the room. So and I'm also doubly blessed and I get a little emotional thinking about it because I'm also a Ford Scholar from a couple, many years back. And so, welcome to the family, so to speak. We're so excited to have you here. I didn't want to, I'm also a data nerd, so I did want to dive in a little. We have four scholarship programs right now. We have our Ford Scholars Program that folks may know us most through this program. This is for graduating high school seniors. We award up to a hundred and thirty a year for Oregon and Siskiyou County, California. We also have our Ford Transfer Scholars Program, and we have five recipients this year from RCC. Amazing. And this is for eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds that have a plan to transfer to a four-year university. And then we have our Ford Opportunity Scholars Program, and this is for parents of any age and then non-parenting students at twenty-five years or older, really our non-traditional students. And we award ninety-six of those per year. And we have nine recipients from RCC this year. Fantastic. Another program that we also administer is the Ford Sons and Daughters, and this is for the dependents of Roseburg Forest Products employees. We also have a scholarship for their student, for their children as well. Just some stats here. Since nineteen ninety-four, when we first started the scholarship programs, we've given out two hundred and sixty-two million dollars. We are the largest private scholarship provider in the state of Oregon. We benefited seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine students, including our three new recipients here. We currently have almost a thousand active recipients, nine hundred and ninety-seven. They're attending a hundred institutions all throughout the United States, but most of them are in Oregon and California. And we had two thousand seven hundred and forty-six total eligible applications in twenty twenty-five. And out of those applications, we awarded roughly two hundred and eighty scholarships this past year. So congratulations to our scholars for making it through the process. It's very rigorous. They had to interview. So proud of you. And then we are a little, we're on track to give out twelve point eight million dollars for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic year. Just, I'm also a data nerd, and there was a lot of excitement about how many Ford recipients RCC received this year. This is the second highest number that historically, looking back to when the first RCC student was awarded in nineteen ninety-six, fourteen in twenty twenty-five, the second all time. So I just wanted to give hats off to RCC staff, faculty, support from Board of Education, President Weber. Thank you so much for the all hands on deck approach. I think the proof is in the data here. So thank you so much. Oh, the places they'll go. We have eight students that are planning to attend RCC this coming fall to use their scholarship, many with plans to transfer on to a four-year institution. And for our transfer scholars, we have one going to Lewis and Clark, two going to OSU, one going to UCC and our, I believe that one is actually a Ford Opportunity Scholar that's going to get into UCC nursing. And then we have two that are going to the University of Oregon. And we provide a lot of comprehensive support. So for our scholars, just to queue up your orientation that you're going to have on Saturday in Eugene, we provide quite a few supports through the foundation that includes support for mental health, personal growth and learning, financial empowerment, academic support, security and basic needs, and career and professional development. And so really a whole hands-on-deck support system for you in tandem with your campus. So I was very excited to get to connect with April, to connect with Joseph earlier today, just to learn more about the support that she have here at RCC. That, thank you so much, and congratulations, Class of Twenty Twenty-Five recipients.
Zach, thank you so much for helping us better understand the Ford Scholars Program and more importantly, the foundation for the continued commitment and our students. That's the best investment we can make. And what I'd like to do is I would like to ask Ashley Faith and Quentin, if you three would mind sneaking up here. And and I I've been told that you're all ready to share a word or a statement in preparation. Have I been told correctly? Okay, so it's it's always great to hear about the program. And what you're going to hear now is, not surprisingly, from these students, a little bit of testimony and understanding in in what the program means to them. And you'll see very quickly how easy and good of an investment this is. So you want to go up first?
Yeah. Hi, you guys. My name is Faith Arnspeiger, and I am a Opportunity Scholarship recipient. And I just want to say that I'm deeply honored. I cannot believe those numbers of applications. So honored to be a recipient, to have been selected. I have a pretty great story. And basically, I'm a widowed mother to three young daughters. Two are teenagers and one is ten. And I've been trying to finish school for, since twenty twenty, obviously, lots of obstacles. So out faced lots of obstacles, obstacles, excuse me, including the fire that took out our home, the Almeida wildfire. And then it was a year after where their father died. But it's been really hard to continue. I'm a high school dropout. I got my GED in twenty twenty-one. And now I have been attending college for two terms, originally for dental hygiene. But my first psychology class really opened my eyes up to what I'm passionate about. And because of the Ford Scholarship, I will continue to move forward and gain my bachelor's degree in psychology. And from there, I will go for my master's. And my goal is to become a licensed therapist with animal therapy assistance. And I want to focus on the children of our community who are experiencing trauma and grief. I found it really difficult to find therapists for my children, and I know that it's something we need. So that's what I'm going to go for. And I just, I can't be more excited to be a recipient of the Ford Scholarship because I don't have to worry about the cost of tuition, the cost of my books, childcare. I don't have to worry about how I'm going to continue to pay my bills while I go to school. Like there, this is, that's a huge, huge obstacle that has been taken out from in front of me, and I can focus on what's more important, and that's being a mother and now being a college student.
Hello, I am Quentin Harwood Barnes. I am also deeply honored to be a recipient of the Ford Scholarship. A little bit about me is I currently work in addiction recovery. That's a subject that's really passionate to me because I came from a family that struggled with addiction and mental health issues. And then that ultimately led to my own addiction issues. In two thousand and nineteen, I was given the Josephine County Drug Court Program. And in drug court, I, that's kind of where I got my passion for working with other addicts, you know. And one of the things that I learned was that trauma is a big thing that, you know, affects most addicts. And, you know, for me, it was childhood stuff and then watching my parents, you know, do drugs, and I didn't really think it was a problem until it, you know, I got to a point where I was looking at going to prison. So Drug Court basically saved my life. And with that, one of the requirements that Drug Court has is that you have to get a GED, which I didn't get when I was younger. I didn't graduate high school. So that ultimately led me to being in the Drug Court Program for three years because it took me a really long time to get the GED. I passed the first three tests, no problem, but the math was like a killer to me, and still to this day, that's an issue, but I'm working through it. And once I got that, I was, I knew that there was something I needed to do. I always felt like, even in when I was in addiction, I felt like I had a purpose, but I wasn't, I wasn't there. I knew it was there, but I didn't know what it was. And so once I got that GED, the first thing I did, I got my GED in two thousand twenty-two in August. In September, I enrolled in RCC. Originally, I was a business major, and I actually ended up taking a communications class along with business law. One thing I learned in that class is business law was like the most monotonous set of reading I've ever had to do. I did get an A in that class, but I hated it. And when I took the communications class and being that I already work in addiction recovery, I started to realize my passion really was with people and helping people. I knew I didn't want to be a drug and alcohol counselor. So the the path I've decided to take is to earn a master's degree in psychology and to do family therapy. Much like you, I would like to help people heal trauma because that's the root of it. So working with addicts and mental health issues, you know, is where my passion lies. So and again, I am super grateful. When I seen those numbers, that's amazing that there was that many people that qualified for this, and I was one of the three. So I'm super honored and absolutely grateful.
Hello, everyone. First of all, thank you all for being here to celebrate us. My name's Ashley, and I recently graduated from RCC with my Associate of General Studies, actually graduated last weekend. I was just accepted into the Dental Hygiene Program here at RCC, and I am a Ford Opportunity Scholarship recipient. And a few years ago, I would not have believed you if you would have told me that I would be the person, and I don't want to get emotional, that I would be the person up here receiving this award and talking about my achievements. I'm a person that has struggled with trauma all my life and addiction all my life, and I am in long-term recovery. And in the middle of me signing up for my college classes, my daughter lost her father. And I was going to work full-time. I was, I was coming home, taking care of her, taking night classes. Every day, I was just putting one foot in front of the other. A lot of times I was really overwhelmed. A lot of times I wanted to give up. And the turning point for me was when I really started participating in RCC, when I was introduced to the Trio Program. And the guidance and support that they gave me really built up my confidence. And they really helped me feel comfortable to share my story honestly with the Ford Family Foundation. And they're a big part of why I'm standing here today. And I'm truly at a time in my life where all of my dreams are coming to fruition. And I feel very blessed to be able to say that. So moving forward, I'm, I'm going to spend the next four years pursuing dental hygiene. Someday, I'm going to open a nonprofit dental clinic to help other people in recovery and other people with limited access to care. And I'm so happy that I get to spend the next four years just focusing on school and being a mom and giving back to the community. Thank you.
Ashley, Faith, Quentin, thank you so much for sharing your stories and the courage for it. And so, and we know you're going to be successful. You're going to be successful, as you've already just demonstrated, the resilience that you've shown to be where you are today. And we also know you're going to be successful because of support from Ford Family and and others in your lives. So thank you to everybody. This is a great way to start our meeting with recognition and look forward to seeing you walk across the stage again in a couple of years with that. I think we probably typically, we asked the board chair to say this, but we have so many in attendance. You are all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. You are also welcome to find the nearest exit if you have others.
Thank you. All right. Yes, please feel free. We're not offended in any way. So.
We realize we're kind of.
Carry on with your. All right. Well, that really was a great context in our work to see the fruition of what this pre-institution and all of the community and our community partners, our staff are doing to support students. So that's very moving. Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Patel?
No, not public.
No public comment. All right. We are now on college reports, and I did see that the Student Government, Christian Smith, submitted a written report. I don't see Christian, Christian is here. Would you, that was excellent report, Christian. Would you like to highlight a few areas of your report?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, hello, this is ready. It's good to see you guys in person. We're going to start off with page number two for student success under a bracket five. We had the Riverside Campus pizza with the president. The event went very well. I was shocked how well it went. We decided to set up in front of Rogue Central this time instead of the conference room. And having that direct inflow, students coming into the front, it was really a huge difference. I think in total, we saw well over forty students stop by the table for a slice and probably half that number stopping and chatting with everybody. Very exciting for us. At the end of the event, only one and a half pizzas remained compared to our normal fiber taste. So also much better. Next up, we have AZP's induction ceremony. The event wasn't hosted by us at student government, but I was there as a defective speaker. I was the former president for the organization. In total, we had about fifty-eight in that event, and nearly triple that amount was admitted into the organization this year. We had the cafeteria provided three cups and cup case, which was very nice to see as well. Next up, we have the partner study cafes between ASG and AZP. All three events, we had the normal waffles and healthier snacks provided by us, the student government. At Riverside, fifteen to twenty students were present at the event, according to tell, since some of them did sign in. And we sort of just chatting or leaving with food in their hands, they were all studying for almost the entire event. We had students there. They were all working, I think, a couple of classes came in as well, which was great to see. At TRC, only five to ten students arrived. Again, there's a positive count, which was when I was signing in. There was no late-night classes on campus this term, which was typically our selling point for the TRC event. And at Redwood, the team decided to host it again on a Saturday. So surprisingly, only ten students were present, just like last term. I'm not sure where the numbers were sold out. First term, we did it. We had a lot more in a weekend. And if your bash is next, we have the Goon, we have the Sage I Night. I was hosted on the tenth here on this campus. Held instead of prom as well. The theme was obviously the Goon, the eighties movie. We had fire decorations, some yard games set up. We had the Emery C. Help up, help us out and barbecue some hot dogs, which was awesome. costume contest and cafeteria reading were also there. Eight-thirty was when we set up an auditorium for the movie. We had twenty, excuse me, over twenty attendees counted, consistent staff, students, and family members. And the last bit, we had our officer recruitment update. We interviewed and accepted four new officers on the team for the next act in the year, so we'll have quite a bit more than we had this time around. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Excellent report. Thank you, Christian. And really well, well-written again. Appreciate that. All right, I'm moving on to other reports. I do see anyone from Faculty Association or Faculty Senate or Classified Association. So we're going to then move on to our board reports. So the Executive Committee met Monday, I think it was. It was changed time. And we actually covered everything that we are planning to act upon tonight or informational items. We talked a bit in depth about the presentation that Elisa and my, my, my mind is just, yes. Shared with us this earlier this evening. So that was pretty much our executive committee report. Board outreach, Pat and Jonathan, anything to share?
Anything to share? Do you have anything from the?
I was at the RV cog for me this month, and we had a budget hearing, very riveting, and adopted it. That was the highlight.
Okay, anything else to add, Pat? Any?
No.
All right. Then let's move on to OCCA, OSBA liaison, Jonathan.
I have two things. The twenty-sixth, which is, I think, Thursday, is the last lunch and learn for this year. And it's an important one. It's Oregon Public Meeting Law. And we know as an elected official in the state of Oregon, you need to, during your term, have to, you can, you have to get certified as attending the class. And I'm not sure if this does this. I haven't, I haven't found out yet from OCCA, but I think it does. And then the, the, the other thing I want to remind people and have it on their calendars, November fifth to seventh, is the annual conference at Hood River, Oregon. So at the best western Hood River, and I know that the guys at the Central, it's, Lumbey Gorge is planning on putting on quite a show, and I'm not sure, it might, it's going to be fun regardless. So put it on your calendars. But those are the two things I have.
Great. And that is a fun session. I think the ones that the Ethics Commission ran were close to two hours. So more than you ever wanted to know, but very instructive and excellent time well spent. Foundation Board Liaison, we have Indra and Maria.
I just want to say, at the nursing penning ceremony, they, they got to have written statements as they crossed. I'll talk more about that later. It was so nice. But several of them meant, more than a few mentioned the foundation scholarships, and that caught my ear. And and just very grateful, and the foundation just does such a great job helping our students get through schools. Wanted to highlight that.
We are then going to move on to college updates. So President's Report, Randy?
Yeah, so my, my written report this month was the, the Community Impact Report provided by United Strategies. And as you recall, when we, when we started to talk and work with them, it was really what we wanted was for them to give us a better understanding of what's going on in our community that might tie to the work of the college. We've been light on that as a lot of their efforts have been focused on Salem during long session. So this is kind of a, here's what's been going on over the spring, continuing to talk with them about how that would keep, keep kind of coming in the monthly report. But right, when session's not in place, there'll, there'll be less session-focused and more community. So we're, we're working on, on how that works, but I really appreciate that relationship with them. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank each of you for attending commencement on Saturday. We know we stole a part of your weekend. Hopefully, we found it is rewarding as we did to celebrate our students and their great accomplishments. I think we had, I'm trying to count just by chairs and rows, about two hundred and fifty or so walking. And it was a just great way to to acknowledge their, their hard work and accomplishments. Couple of things I'm going to steal from, Juliet is, is taking some well-deserved personal time. Jamie is on unscheduled leave, not, not feeling, not started the day, and she's with us online but not prepared to speak unless she absolutely needs to. So we're wishing her getting well soon. So I'm going to pull out some of the highlights that I really enjoyed from this month's report. More focused on, on student stuff. When we think about how might we be moving the needle on our work around access and success for students? I know you all enjoy that, that, that as, as much as I do, but we have focused on high school over the last couple of years, and it has paid dividends multiple times over. And a perfect example of that is one of the partnerships highlighted. The school districts recently received eligibility for some very late money to use in the summer. And honestly, the only schools that were able to capitalize it are ones like, how do we have either shovel, shovel-ready or existing partnership plans in place? And so Medford School District, as well as Grants Pass, both said, well, we've got great relationships with RCC. We can definitely work with them to improve some programs and do that. So we're working with both of them through high school programs and community ed to, to really leverage some access to summer education for their students. And and those, that only became possible because we already had an existing partner. We had no idea this opportunity was on the table. But they're like, well, this is, this is what happens when, when, when they exist. One of the things that really jumped out at me was a lot of conversation that's going on nationally is around Trio and continued eligibility and support for Trio programming across the country. And if you saw in there, over one thousand students are impacted by RCC's Trio Program. You heard one of our students tonight talk about the impact of Trio on her. I will say, if, 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 if something were to happen to our Trio Program at RCC, there is no just picking up what we do for students with those departments, whether it's K-12 students helping them get to college, whether it's helping our current students be successful and become eligible for amazing scholarship opportunities like we saw, the way we're able to provide support to our students with the most vulnerability through that program. And then to hear how they, they leverage that into great careers, it, it's, it's, it's an amazing program. But over a thousand students was a key takeaway, I suspect, as you're in, in the community, and people see some of that publicly, they may ask you, do you have it? Does it impact you? So, so you know that. A couple of years ago, in our efforts to say, how do we get more students to come directly to college from high school? We, our team said, well, we got an idea to do High School Registration Day. So rather than just going in the spring and trying to recruit them, why don't we actually get them to register? And so we started these High School Registration Days. This spring, our team went out and enrolled four hundred and eighteen high school students in college for summer and for fall. Took a lot of concerted effort to be able to do that. So those are examples from, from the, from the report. Another thing I really wanted to probably close out and highlight is was when you referenced our nursing students and the support that they've received. There, we've had some, some long time and some recent significant givers to, to that program and the students within it to support. And most recently, we were able to secure a half-million-dollar commitment from a donor for the next two years to establish the foundation for an RCC Healthcare Simulation Excellence Center. And so the idea is knowing that simulation can help meet clinical demands and provide very specific training and learning opportunities for students. We need to ramp it up and make it sustainable. And through this contribution, we're able to say, you know, look, this is, we're going to, we're going to grow our simulation program, add some VR, which is virtual reality capabilities. It's a very fast-growing field. We have professional development built into that plan. So people can go to trainings. We can buy some technology and some software. So we'll be bringing forward some things that will be really impressive to you in that space. And one of the things that I did, we did in talking with the donor, was we said, we appreciate your passion for this program. Part of the reason we're asking you to do this in this way is also she had challenged us in the past to, to, to use her as a model and to challenge other folks is we want to use this demonstrated commitment to our allied health professions for other programs and say, look at the level of skills training we're doing for students in healthcare. Don't students in your industry, in transportation and manufacturing, don't they deserve, deserve similar learning environments? So it's allowing us to create kind of a standard and an expectation for the other fields. And so we keep seeing healthcare as a signature program, and it's definitely growing as a program of need. But we don't want to stop with our healthcare programs on the way we deliver education. So that hopefully will be inspiring and challenging to other. So that hopefully will be inspiring and challenging to other industries to say, yes, our students deserve to, to learn with similar technologies. And so I will stop there as, as my report tonight. I just, I, I watch our students come in and tell their stories and, and I, I, I'm motivated for the rest of the meeting. We got a lot of boring stuff coming up.
Anything to ask, Randy? Any comments? I just found the report really instructive and lovely pictures. So, and it seems that somebody has to take the time to lay all this out. So appreciate that. Well done. All right, then moving on to the next report, as I've put that to my agenda, is Senior Leadership Team. So Lisa.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jamie would like me to let you all know that the E-Building Grant opening will be August twenty-sixth. More information and the official date is soon. So August twenty-eighth. And I think on behalf of JB and I
Twenty-six or twenty?
Twenty-sixth. Sorry, I'm changing the date. Twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth.
Six.
Yeah. So I think just want to highlight again, kind of what Randy said, and just appreciate all the staff that came and helped during graduation. It was really fun to see some of the guys from IT handing out cupcakes. People moving things are, it, it's just a great time to really just connect with our staff and watch our students. It's a happy day. A really happy day. Everyone's in a good mood. Everyone's smiling. It's just, it's been a great year, but it's been a hard year with a whole new software program. And so to see everyone smiling at the same time, having fun is heartwarming, really heartwarming. And so again, there's a lot going on in both divisions. And I'll just say with Ops and Finance, again, we're coming to the end of the year. We're trying to get all our purchase recs in. We're trying to get everything wrapped up for the year end. A lot of projects are happening still. And the teams are just working really hard to get everything done. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the report. One day, we're going to get more pictures in there of our division. They'll happen. I've just, it will happen. They might not be exciting pictures, but they'll be there.
Right. Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa? All right, thank you. We are going to move on to instruct institutional effectiveness. Isam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today you will see that Witme is part of our institutional research team. The last few months, we had talked to you about continuously about how delivering effectiveness does depend on good information. And that good information needs to be consistent, but also, as you have often pointed out, transparent and easier to navigate and understand, not only internally, but outside as well. To that effect, one of the, one of the projects we undertook, and we repurposed some funds from our travel budget, not a whole lot, not even two thousand. I'm a cheap guy, cheap guy. We got a new, a new tool to do that. And we are going to show you that today to see kind of the things we're doing with it. It's start of it. By the time we are done with it, I think you will like what you will see. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Institutional Research, Sarah Crown.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Isam. Thank you. It's nice to see everyone today. I do have a presentation I'm going to pull up. So I think that what Isam coached me on this. So join as a panelist. As your panelist, you should be able to share your screen. Okay, sweet. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna share screen here. I only have one screen. And there we go. Okay, so I've got my prezo here. I am going to be bouncing back and forth a little bit. So I think I'm just going to leave it in this mode for now. And then if you have any questions, and I'll, and I'll share the presentation with everyone. So again, this is the report from Institutional Research. I am going to introduce myself. I think everyone kind of at this point knows who I am. I'm going to introduce myself. I am the Director of IR, Sarah Crown. I started, I joined Roke in mid-February. I became on campus in mid-March, relocated from Southern Louisiana. Been here for about four months. So I have about over ten years of experience in data analytics. A lot of that is in business analytics. And then I've got about four or so years of experience in higher education. So I mean, I've worked in newspapers. I've worked in casino gambling. I've worked in all kinds of different topics. So I'm very well-rounded, I like to say. My academic background is in data and economics, also political science, but I don't always admit that in this company. I, you know, I relocated from Louisiana. I was really, really excited to take this position on this team at this institution. As I was on-boarded, you know, we spoke about different areas of focus. And kind of where we've landed is we just want to build on our existing strengths. We've got a great foundation. We just want to build upon it. I want to enhance our data efficiency, and I really want to empower our stakeholders, all of our stakeholders, whether they're, you know, really data literate or not data literate, whether they're a parent out there deciding whether they want to send their student to RCC or they're the board trying to make, you know, really high-level decisions. And then we want to continue to uphold our integrity and our governance and our transparency about the data and the data that we're reporting. So things I've identified so far is that RCC has a really strong foundation in compliance. And they are starting to transition from reactive to proactive approaches. And we're very well positioned to ask and answer forward-looking questions. And I want to be a part of that. I am here to just keep that ball rolling, and if anything, to add some steam or some gas. I'm thinking, I'm picturing a train. I don't know. You know, federal and state reporting is super important. It keeps our doors open, and it has provided a lot of great foundational re, rework. But the thing is, is that RCC is complex, and that complexity is a strength. But it means that there's all sorts of like different layers of context that matter. You know, we've got seven deans, three vice presidents, a president, a board of directors, or a board of education, hundreds of faculty and staff and other MAC employees who all have questions they want to answer. And I want us to have the apparatus in place to answer those questions. And to answer them before they're even asked, before we even know they're a relevant question. So what does that mean? We have this opportunity to just continue the work that we've done and to continue to build this very valuable system. I've identified some areas where we can streamline and enhance some of the work we've already been doing. I want to do that by minimizing maintenance expense. And I want to, once we've minimized some of that maintenance expenses, I want to unlock more time for conversation, for collaboration, for innovation in decision-making, instead of just grinding, because we have to get some data points submitted to someone for some reason that we don't know about, and they just go into a black box. Like, I want to take power over our data. And I think we're in a good position to do so. But to be meaningful, you know, our stakeholders, they need more nuance. They need more relevance. They need more context. They need to know what a power, a particular department or course is doing, not just how we're doing overall as an institution. And so that is what I'm kind of driven to do. So that gives me some kind of goals. You know, I've already kind of, um, you know, referenced these, which is to elevate our analytics. We want to strengthen data-informed decision-making. We want to identify gaps and opportunities. We want to make tools more accessible and user-friendly, even for people who may not be data literate, who may not, you know, sleep and breathe Microsoft Excel. We want to expand. I want to expand interactivity. So segmentation matters. You know, it matters. We see that in our student success indicators. You know, if, you know, we don't want to sacrifice, you know, one segment of our population for another segment. So, you know, so we've been focusing a lot of attention on accelerated learners, and you will see that attention in the data, and it's, it's obvious and it's amazing, but we don't want to do that at the expense of other new students, for instance. I'm not saying that we have. I'm just saying that we want the data to know if we are or not. And so that is, that's what we're working toward. So we want to increase transparency. We want to have share, like a single source of information. We want to have clear definitions. One of the things that I've found working through this pro, project is like, there's like a million different definitions of FTE, which is really super hard for me, because I came from an institution that didn't rely on FTE at all. So I'm like, okay. And so we've got reimbursable FTE, we've got total FTE, and, you know, these, these definitions matter in different contexts. And so we want to like, kind of, uh, remove some of that fuzziness. And so we're all know what we're talking about and talking about the same thing at the same time. And I really think that this vision that I have, and you'll see some of it here when I go through a demonstration. I really do think we have the opportunity to do that, to be able to like, really create a single source of information that gives our, all of our stakeholders enough control over the information that they're engaging with, that they will be able to use it for all of their different purposes. Instead of having, you know, this goes to finance and, and planning, and this goes to marketing, and this goes to the board, and this goes to our public stakeholders. Now, I'm talking about one thing, one place where all of these questions can be answered. And that's kind of my vision. And we have to start small. We're starting with two projects, but we'll get there in a second. I get all excited too. When I'm like Dr. Randy, I get all excited when I'm talking about data and, and analytics. But that just makes me good for the position, I think. So we've got three projects that are kind of, you know, driven by stakeholder priorities and questions. And so those are, you know, and this is where the most of our business intelligence lies right now. Most of our analytics lies right now, is answering, who are our students? How are they doing? And then what does that mean for the institution financially? And so we've got our Data at a Glance, which is on our public-facing website that we're probably all kind of familiar with. And I had it open, and here it is. We're all, you know, we're all kind of familiar with it. I think, I don't, I, this might be required for accreditors or something. I'm not, I'm not totally clear on that. But, um, you know, we've got this data at a glance, and it's good information. It, it tells a complete picture. But I, I don't know that somebody could, you know, somebody can't really drill into this information and kind of engage with it. It just kind of tells us what it tells us. And if we want to know more about it, you know, we can't engage with it. So one of, so I have taken the project to recreate this in a way that may give more meaningful insights and create more user engageability. So that's one project that is a focus, and we're going to talk more about that. The other project that is also public-facing, but like, no public person has ever viewed ever once. So this is our Student Success Indicators. So we've shared this for some reason, I'm assuming, or else it wouldn't be shared. But then no one engages with it. I want to make people want to engage with it. I want it to be so interesting that students or students or viewers or whoever are coming here and using this information. And so these are our Student Success Indicators. And you'll see it, you get here, and you have to like scroll for like ever. And you don't really know what you're interpreting, and it's just a bunch of pictures. And, and I don't love it. You know, there's a lot of reasons why I don't love it. So these are the two top priority projects that we are working on currently. And then the third is just continuing to, continuing to support enrollment information as it exists. That is, um, it's an internal, it's internal, and, um, the focus right now is really on what information we're sharing publicly so that, you know, all our stakeholders are on the same page, and we're all telling everyone the same thing. And so we've got some additional projects. You know, I've spoken with stakeholders literally probably representing every department at the institution, every division at the institution. We've got lots of projects that I'm envisioning, but this is kind of where we're starting, is with these two to three projects. So, to kind of launch these projects to get more vision, to get more view, to get more engagement. Obviously, we want to take RCC to the next level of data accessibility and, and impact. I, you know, I'm coming from a position where I think that this is best done in Tableau. And therefore, we are looking at a product called Tableau Public that we are currently developing in to share with our external stakeholders. This is not to replace anything that we've already done. Everything we have is invaluable, but this is to complement those measures so that, again, people who aren't as familiar with the metrics as internal stakeholders or people who may not be as data savvy as our internal stakeholders who have been using these BIs for four years may engage with the information a little, a little easier for them. It also makes it, in my opinion, more straightforward on the developer side and requires less maintenance in the long run. So, you know, that's kind of a win-win if we're helping developers and we're helping data digestion. Isam gave me ten minutes. I'm sorry. This is what, you know, we're gonna, we'll see what happens. But you may ask, why Tableau? Well, Tableau was designed, and you're going to appreciate this, Gary. Tableau was designed specifically for data visualization. Like, it was designed as a data visualization application. Makes it more intuitive for the developer and the user to kind of engage with that information. So that's why Tableau, why Tableau Public? I mean, again, it's just extending our tradition of transparency and community access. It's designed as a data visualization application, but this particular product is designed for public-facing analytics. And I'm going to say, and, you know, we wouldn't have invested as little bit as we did invest in it if it wasn't worth to try it. But there are some others who will agree that it increases the ease of use for our stakeholders, but that still remains to be seen. You guys can let us know once this goes live in a couple of months. Well, let's see. I have promises, so we're going to meet those promises. But again, our goal is just to make RCC's data more understandable, actionable, and trusted. And more viewable for our, for who needs to know about us. Because there's only good things to hear, you know? We have an impact on our community, and our programs are doing very well, and our students have great things to say about us. I don't know why this isn't just blasted everywhere. All of it was, it kind of is. But we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it even better. So as I mentioned, we've got two projects that are currently, we're working on revamping, which are the two public-facing projects. I am owning the Data at a Glance project, while my colleague, one of the IR analysts, James, is working on the Student Success Dashboards. So my goal is to give more, more like kind of a filterability and segmentation for looking at the data at a glance. And then James is really focusing on actionable items that we can report in the student success work that are clearly defined and that, you know, we already trust our data, but that are trustable. Now, as we transition from RokeNet to GenZ Bar, we're finding like some oddities. One of those, Dr. Randy brought to our attention with the, um, there was just a discrepancy in non-credit courses. Like, why are we seeing so many fewer students enrolled in non-credit courses this summer versus last summer? And it turns out it was driver's ed. You know, the process had changed where we collect that data, and it's not reaching our data warehouse the same way. And so we weren't able to capture that information. But as we engage with this information, we can find that, we can see those findings. Um, so that leads us to the demonstration that I have for you, so we can introduce you to a project that was developed, kind of with my vision in mind, that was developed in Tableau Public, that will be published. I do need you to forgive me though, because Isam came to me, it was like at least three weeks ago. And I had introduced my vision to him. I'd showed him what I'd been working on, and he said, that's great. Can we, can we, you know, will that be in a position where you're, you feel comfortable sharing that in a board-type forum, you know, sometime, sometime? And I'm like, yeah, sure, you know, when is it? And he's like, oh, mid, mid-June. Oh, sure, no problem. That's next month. No worries. And then, you know, life happens, and IT stuff happens. And, you know, I like kind of broke my remote desktop and, I don't know, like, basically Murphy's Law happened. So, um, here we are. Hopefully, you do take, um, you do take some good step away from this, because I do think it's, it's great work. I've got a super ambitious vision. I want all the bells and whistles and all of it there for you. I see us realizing that vision. I really do. It's going to take a little bit of time, but I mean, not like years or anything. My promised date for this project is September first, so this will be live on our website by September first. I'd like to have it done sooner, but that's just going to really require, it's just going to depend on what else the universe has to throw at me. Monday was like, yesterday was like the Monday-est Monday ever. So like, if it's, if it stays that way, it'll definitely be September first. But, um, that is just some intro. Okay, another little caveat. What you're going to see today is kind of bare bones. And what do I mean by that? It's kind of thrown together. All the data is accurate, but that doesn't mean, like, I still need to go back and I still need to foot like the RokeNet data, because all of this data right now is coming out of GenZ Bar. And so we're just, I, I don't completely trust that it's going to foot back to RokeNet forever into the past. So we're working on that. Rhoda and I are working on that. So that's, that's one reason why we need to just realize this is kind of like bare bones. Right now, I only have realize this is kind of like bare bones. Um, right now I only have one view, like one comparison view ready. And that is, we're going to be looking at year, like, so we're going to be looking at the current year, year to date, but the previous year, the entire year. So I haven't worked out that previous year to date versus current year to date, but that is definitely part of the bigger vision. Um, there's also like some segment drill ability function that I want to work out, but I'm just not quite sure what that looks like yet. And this is really super ugly, like it's going to require some cosmetic work, but you guys are, you guys are, no, I've only been here for four months. You know that, you know, Murphy's Law has been working against me and you're going to be really accepting. Um, and just like as a demonstration, this is the table. This is, so on the left here are all of the data tables that I'm talking to, to get this information. And so you don't have to be a data scientist to realize like, that's a lot of tables. And then on the right is the error code I kept getting that was telling me I was out of memory and that I was exceeding it. So, um, I don't know how many, like a million bytes is, James and I were trying to figure it out. Um, so I don't know if that's like a huge ask for IT, like I need a million more bytes. I don't know. So, but you know, one of them will have a good laugh about it at some point. Um, so I've got two kind of, and, and so that's the, um, that's my presentation, but I'm going to give you a demonstration. And then I will allow you to ask any questions, which I may or may not answer, and I may just punt them to Isam. So it could be like, why did you hire this girl? We've got two lines of punting. Okay, perfect. Um, so the two versions I'm going to share with you. Okay. So the thing about data is you want live data, but when you're looking at 17 million tables, you know, it, it makes it, it makes, it, it kind of slows it down a bit. So where you were seeing that exceeds memory is when I was actually trying to create an extract and not talk to the live data. Like I was trying to create an extract, so I didn't have to talk to the live data, but it said, hey, you want to extract too much data. Sorry, you can't have all that data. And so I was stuck with the live, with the live connection. And so I'm going to bounce back and forth between an old book that has a static old data connection. That's like, was, the data was pulled like three or four weeks ago and then a live updated version, which doesn't have as much functionality because I need to produce that extract. But this is not the view. So let me go to my RDP. And so this is what I'm working on for you guys. So we want, we want something that says, what is the state of our termly enrollment? So we know how is spring doing just towards spring? Or how is summer doing versus summer? But we also want to know how we're doing annually on an, on an academic year basis. So you're going to have two views that look like this. So you're going to see, okay, and this is, um, this is summer versus summer. And again, this is the end of summer last year. So this was, we had 1,900 students at our FTE date last summer. And we've got some filters up here that allows for some filterability. So right now I'm saying, tell me about my base year is going to be the 2025, 26 academic year. What's that mean? It's going to compare to the previous year before that. I want to look at summer right now, and I want you to segment this by geography for me. So it gives me each of the geography buckets down here at the bottom. And so we can see that, you know, Jackson County, we have, you know, for summer, we've got, I don't know, two and a half times more students enrolled from Jackson County than we do from Josephine County. You know, there are interpretations that could be made by, from that. Um, we see that we're down about 21% heads compared to last summer. So if we want to break even with last summer, we need to enroll about 400 more students. We do see that we're only looking at, uh, credit courses right here. Um, I've got a couple of other filters over here that's going to tell us we're only looking at reimbursable courses. So this is driven off of act, an acti code, which is an internal code. Again, I'd never heard of before. Um, an internal code that classifies whether a class de, represents whether a class is reimbursable or not. So our, our external stakeholders may be very interested in everyone. Whereas our finance office may be only interested in what's reimbursable. And so this is one place that two different stakeholders with two different purposes can come and get the same information. Um, or the information they need, which is actually technically different information. Um, I did create this filter to include or exclude driver's ed courses. When we found out that the credit, the non-credit, um, the non-credit clock hours or enrollments were kind of being inflated because we, the previous year was being inflated, the current year was being understated because we were missing um, our driver's ed students from campus marketplace. So I did create that filter. So we can kind of control for some of that noise in the data that we have may not have controlled for before. So you're going to have, again, you're going to have this view and then you're going to have, um, an annual view. There, you're able to kind of, we're going to look at this in the other book. So this is the most recent version that I'm working on. I just kind of wanted you guys to see. We've got, we go from students to clock hours to FTE. Obviously they're all related to each other. Oh, this was something I thought was interesting. Even though we're down 20% of student heads year versus year at this point, we're only down 10% of the clock hours. So, I mean, that means that our students are enrolling in more clock hours. And so does that mean they're going to stay enrolled in those clock hours? Are we going to see some attrition when they drop? Um, at the start of the term, maybe they see they're enrolled in too many courses. Point is, is that there are, there are lots of insights to be gleaned from this information. And I think it's laid out in a way that is, I guess, digestible by, you know, someone who doesn't have, okay, so what's, what's a clock hour? I don't know. Oh, it relates to FTE this way, right? Or, you know, how do students fit this whole picture? Because FTE doesn't care about the number of students. It just cares about the number of clock hours. So our FTE could be going up while our number of heads is staying the same. Or because we're, the students are taking more courses, or our FTE could be going up. Um, because our number of students are going up, but they're actually taking less courses. So it's putting downward pressure on FTE. Like there are just different ways that, that, that context matters really.
So I hate to interrupt.
Am I out of time?
Well, I, we probably need to wrap up here pretty quickly.
So sorry. I'm so sorry. Isam, I promise Isam told me 10 minutes. Okay. One thing I do just want to show you so fast is, um, the ability to change your segment type. So, so-and-so may be interested in geography and we can come in here and see that, oh, we've seen an increase year versus year in Jackson County and a decrease year over year in Josephine County. Well, what's going on in Josephine versus Jackson? Or somebody else may be interested in age segment. And so they might say, you know, how are our 18-year-olds doing versus some of our other students? And we can see that, you know, our 18 to 22, to the point that Dr. Randy was making, our 18 to 22-year-olds were seeing an increase. This was spring. So spring 25 to spring 24, we've seen that increase and it's a huge increase, right? You can see that, um, little tick mark there. Anyway, you can see that little tick mark there that's making the year versus year, um, comparison. And you can see that that's huge. Point is, is that there are all kinds of ways that you can come in here and look at this information. Maybe it's, I want to know how, you know, we've got, uh, Nicole Sacraida, who's interested in how our Hispanic population is doing. We can see that we saw a decline in enrollment year versus year for his, for our Hispanic students. But it looks like we've had more non-white heads at fewer credit hours. So maybe they're taking non-credit courses. I could go in to interpreting this data for hours. So I'm just going to shut it off now. I don't think we have time for questions. So keep that, um, notes in the back of your mind when you don't want to answer any questions, just go way over time. And I appreciate your time today. Thank you, Dr. Randy.
Thank you, Sarah. So as you can see, we're definitely going to a different, different way moving forward. Um, and I, I think part of the timeline that, that Isam and I have talked about is giving an update on this project at the with, with hitting that target. But, uh, the idea to be able to have access and to dig into data in, in a less, less expert requiring way is, is in the near future.
I think it's really wonderful. Interesting, Sarah, you caught that or you, uh, inferred that I'm a visual person. And so yes, that's why for me auditory and the history of story isn't as valuable as the written word because I like to be able to see the, the printed word to help me figure out what's going on. Having said that, Randy, I'm excited about the direction because it, there are limitless possibilities in looking at how well the institution is performing. So kudos. And I echo Isam's comments about, um, the validity or the reliability of the data. So thank you for taking extra care, you know, with that.
Yeah. Um, so I'm part of the board outreach and I'm not doing a very good job, but I'm seeing this as an awesome way to get information that we can present to groups. Cause we've been asking for that. Like what do we talk about to groups? What's fun? What's interesting? What's great going on at RCC? And so I kind of see you as the person maybe giving us information that we can then go out and share with others.
Oh no, 100%. We want to get this data in your hand. We want to get these tools in your hands, my whole team. Once you get these tools in your hands and wants to, you know, support your efforts to make RCC as effective as possible.
Yeah. So whether it's a, a 30-second talking point to someone you just met, you know, or in the elevator with, or whether it's a five-minute presentation or a 10, it would be so helpful to have 100% that quarterly or something.
So one of the things that, that you will see again at retreat, lots, lots of board treasures built into your retreat is Jamie and her team, uh, and marketing communications are working with Isam on developing collateral pieces that we can give to the board. So when we're doing outreach, that this is the universal way that we're generically telling the college a story. And then when we have special population conversations, we can supplement that, but really the kind of the, if we're just telling you about that college in a 30-second speech, this is it. So they're built, they're, they're building that and we'll have, we'll really have that by the end of the summer and in a branded that's got, that's got, you know, some fast facts are updated on a regular basis as well as some highlighted program achievements. So more, more to come on that.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Isam. And I'd now like to turn to Cass, uh, to give us a foundation.
Okay. So you have, you see my very long written foundation report to you, um, this month, so I won't reiterate that. If you have any questions, um, please let me know. But I do want to share with you something else, which is very exciting. Um, so this summer, the Clackamas Community College President Tim Cook is embarking on a remarkable journey, running more than 1,500 miles in 50 days, visiting all 17 of Oregon's community colleges, um, including RCC. And he's doing this to raise awareness and funds for students facing food insecurity, housing instability, a lack of childcare and limited access to the transportation. And access to transportation. So, uh, he, it's, it's called the Running for Oregon Community College Students Campaign or ROCS. And, um, some few data points are that 41% of Oregon Community College students experience food insecurity. 52% have faced housing instability in the past year and nearly 20% have experienced homelessness. Um, we see this at RCC and we see the struggles firsthand. Um, and so in response to this, our, uh, RCC Board of Education member, Pat Fahy, has generously pledged $5,000 as a match challenge to help us raise a total of $10,000. To raise, um, $10,000, uh, to create a fund to support student basic needs. And because, uh, Gary wants to read this, he can see. But what we would like to ask, and, and we're putting this before the foundation, uh, board as well, is, um, for your support. And I've given you a handy where you can donate if you'd like, um, at the bottom. And so what we're looking to do is, um, raise those $10,000 and those will go, um, to our students in need. We also, uh, have, uh, Tim Cook arriving here at the Redwood Campus Bowl, uh, July 10th at 9:00 AM. And we'd like to invite you for that. Um, Randy, do you want to add anything to that?
I, I think you, you nailed it. It's a, it's a great, he, it's a great opportunity. I mean, he'll be running over a marathon a day for, yeah. Yeah, um, to, to create awareness for our students with basic needs and we're excited to just have them come to campus and for those who can attend, they'll highlight and bring attention to our students with, with needs and supports and how those supports help them reach their educational goals.
They have a challenge, aside from the financial challenge, if you have an old Rubik's Cube, it's, it's not running, you know, it's not completed, bring that on the tent. As Tim is one of the few people that can solve a Rubik's Cube in like 30 seconds.
Okay.
So you can watch him solve the Rubik's Cube. I'm going to, I got two or three I'm going to bring.
So, uh, we would just like to thank you greatly for your, for your.
He's going to be raising the garbage rates, so.
That's the secret backs backstory, but yeah.
So Cass, what is the, the, uh, the window of time to pledge for the $5,000?
I believe the, actually the, 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 the campaign is open till August 30th.
Uh, August 30th.
But we, and we are looking, we'll keep it open on our website. You'll be able to go to the foundation website.
Stretch a little bit and say, I'd love to reach the goal before he gets here, um, on the 10th. I mean, we're going to invite media and I could be able to say, we've raised over $10,000 through these efforts for our CC students. Would, would go a long way.
Okay.
Yeah. As money goes to our students.
It does.
Okay. Any questions for Cass? All right. Moving on then to board action and or information. So in your packet, the monthly financial data report for May, 2025, Lisa?
Absolutely. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I have a few things. One, the auditors are working right now um, on the 24, 25 compliance piece of the audit. So they're looking at, again, um, as we get through trios, and they're looking at student financial aid. If you'll turn to, I believe it is page, sorry, I don't, four. It's the general fund, financial statements. I want to talk about, um, the projected ending fund balance for a minute. Um, during, um, our budget presentations, we talked about, um, we talked about, um, having our resources meet or exceed our expenses. And within our budget and our planning, you see that we haven't quite made it there. But when we look at our financial statements, I want to show you and talk through how we've made it there currently this year with our projections. Um, so when you look at transfers in and transfers out at the bottom of that page, we have a transfer coming in of 1.9 million dollars. That is because we were retiring the renewal and replacement fund. And so we're taking all the funds and all, all the revenues and expenses and fund balance and moving it over. And so that's the transfer in. We also have an $8 million transfer out. The majority of that $8 million dollars is the $5 million that we received from the, um, employee retention tax credit. And we're moving that out. So it's a planned reduction of our ending fund balance. It's not because our expenses exceeded our revenues. So when we take all of that into consideration, we actually are contributing to our ending fund balance around $600, $600,000. And so knowing all of those things and where we're sitting. Now it is still early for us. We have um, some funds that we're looking at. They're eligible to be paid for with one of our grants. We'll be moving that out of the general fund if it's available. Um, again, we changed our accounting structure. We have a new system. So we have a little bit of cleanup that we will be doing. And so um, we'll be bringing back, you know, any fund balance throughout the next few months until we finish our audit. But there is um, good news. We, we are not spending that any, any fund balance for 24, 25.
And I would say that 600,000 contribution, um, comes from obviously living within our planned expenses, but, uh, more so we, we exceeded anticipated revenues or projected revenues. And that's directly tied to enrollment, you know, the impact of when tuition revenue goes up. And while we've hit the growth management cap in the state, it's still more revenue from the state, uh, not, not, not much. Um, but, but that, that tuition needle moving is a lion's share of how and why we've been able to, to reach that goal within our target.
Any questions for Lisa? I've got my usual. Uh, this is one that I bring up occasionally. Uh, GenZ Bar. Um, I, you know, as we have gone through the implementation phase, I periodically hear, well, this one is not working quite the way we want to or something. How are we doing?
So let me explain and then I will say how we're doing. So we implemented GenZ Bar in August. And what occurred is we brought all of the enrollments and registrations that happened during spring term in the first part of summer from RogNet and put it into GenZ Bar. So there was no real registration happening in GenZ Bar in the summer term. For fall term, the majority of those uh, enrollments happened in the spring term from RogNet. So they were pulled in. So we didn't, we did registrations, but we didn't do a lot of registrations. We also We also created and pulled over um courses, right? So we created that all when we started. So when we started winter term, that's the first term that we really started um using Jen's of our one hundred percent for all of our enrollments and all of the things. We learned some stuff during winter term. Spring term was our second term. But also spring term, we have year end things happening, right? We've gotta do transcripts and we've gotta do um make sure they have all their credits to graduate. All of those things are happening. So we're, we've only used the system fully twice for a full cycle of a term. And we're really starting some brand new things. So where we're at right now is we can start working on workflows and actually having um the product work for us rather than maybe us working for the product. So there are still bumps. Um, we had seventeen people go to the la, to the Jen's of our conference in May and um we met today to talk about um things we want to improve and bringing a report to E-Team and then also to the board. Um, but that's where we, we really now know. Oh, this is what the screen means. Oh, this is how I get here. This is how I get there. Um, so now we have enough knowledge to actually build on that and really make improvements. So I believe we are where we need to be right now. Um, is there bumps? Yes. Is it strenuous to work in that system? Yes. But it's only gonna get better from here as we invest more time and energy. Um, and that's where we're at right now. Um, we made a lot of changes on the finance side, right? So this is about finance. Also, we changed our account structure. We did a lot of things um that are better for the institution going forward. It's gonna make us go a little bit slower right now.
I, I, I would, um, I mean, agree with everything Lisa said. One of the things that's important for us to remember is we came from literally decades of a legacy environment where when we told our programmers, we want the tool to do this, it was customized to meet our business process need as we defined it. Uh, so we are learning how to live in a vendor environment. And that's different than hosting and owning your own and saying, I just want my thing to do this thing.
Yeah.
And there are, there are tremendous rewards and benefits for living in a vendor environment, but it's a learning curve. We're not used to living in constrained business practices. We own the tool, we created the tool, we would just make it do what we wanted. And so to, to Lisa's point, we're less than a year of knowing how to live in it. Some of it's just gonna be a maturation. We had a lot of people learn and say, here's how you can do your business processes. So I think to answer the question, how it's doing, I would answer like Jen's of ours performing the way Jen's of ours expected to perform. We still have to work in our current environment to figure out how, how, how does that work for us? How do we learn more? How do we try to influence? How do we change processes? Well, there's a learning, there's a learning curve there and we'll get better at it as we go. Um, but it's maybe different than historical reports where the, the product might not have been delivering what, what, what was bought. And, and because there are, there are decision trees and maybe we chose decision A. But as we learn more about this business process, we really wanna go down B. And now we need to go back and and, and go down B. And then we're providing as much support as we can to help our people get, get there. So it, I, it's, I have optimism and I think a lot of people do. It will continue to get better as we go, as we just mature and learn how to live in the environment.
It, it's a complex, you know, environment that you're trying to fit into. And I'm familiar with that on a very small uh segment. But I just wanted to make sure that we're not running into something that oh, this is not what we wanted, you know, and we're not gonna be able to get there. I haven't heard that.
No, no. Um, maybe you heard that many, many years ago in the past. You, we're, we're not gonna hear that with Jen's Bar. It really does what it says it does. What they sold us, it does.
You know, it's. Right. With anthology, I, we did hear that an awful lot. That's obviously how we got where we are now. So.
In Jen's Bar, what they say it does, it does. And it's now learning. Um, like Randy was saying, there are some things that we may need to reconfigure in the system. But.
Are we gonna need, um periodically, we've added um complimentary software programs that build in and use some of that information or provides. Is there still a lot of that out there or are we past that? Cause those are some significant dollars.
I don't think we're, I think we're far from saying we're past it. I think, you know, as we look forward to what we're trying to accomplish as a college, the ability to integrate to it as a, as an established product will be a benefit to us. So I'll use an example. As we start working on our student success work and we say, we wanna help students with career planning or academic planning and degree audits and all these things that can take a lot of time for advisors to work with students. Would, that technology exists. Jen's of our may not own it. It's a separate product, but they can integrate with Jen's of our. So it's seamless and happen to behind the scenes. We never had that opportunity with the product we own, cause they.
I think that may have been.
And so, so it really, it, it's scary because we're spending the money we are, but it actually allows us to leverage spending more money to accomplish more as we're ready and prioritize.
So we have to be ready to expect those kinda things, at least in the short.
But there is, long term, right? We can take some of the things that have been very laborious for our folks and rely on technology to help. So, but we have to pace ourselves.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Lisa?
Is Jen's of our flexible in the respect that if uh there's a, a problem or something coming up that the, the college wants it to be a little bit different than what they're doing, that they will make that happen, like tweak things a little for us?
Yeah, that's a good question. So um yes, and we have to be part of the user group. They have user groups that come in and they say, here's what we're looking for. Here's how we'd like you to advance your product. So Jen's of ours really relies on their user groups. Um, and we've put in requests in different areas. Um, will they do it just for us? No, um, we're part of an entire. Yeah, basically, right? It's everyone. And really, again, we know what we know. We know how we would like to do it and as a Rog Net user and help make some different changes in there. Yes, we're the best. However, there's people out there, other um colleagues, people that I know that use the system that have different thoughts that may be better than mine. And so we really limited ourselves in Rog Net, like this is how Lisa wants to do it. But really, there's a better way. And so we don't necessarily want that. We wanna know what everybody's looking at and how we can really improve and what that looks like. Um, so I really think we're with a really good product. They really do listen um to their clients.
One of the things these, these, these ERPs, what we call them, used to do is they used to be very customizable to, right? Whatever the customer wants they get. But what happens is over time, one of the things we use them most for is our compliance and regulatory reporting. So we want to be able to extract our data, dump it in and know that it's reliable and valid. And as they were customizing for all these schools over time, when they would run these automatic reports, it didn't work. Because they did this thing in your environment, really neat for you. When you ran your big job to tell the federal government you're compliant, it didn't work because we disconnected this and put it over here. And so most of them now are like, we're not gonna customize for you. Not because we don't wanna serve the customer, but for your own good. We go in there and start messing with that. You're not gonna have the reliability when you run some of these reports that are, are tools supposed to do for you. So it's hard to say, but in some ways they save us from ourselves by not letting us run down those rabbit holes.
Much so, yes.
Other questions for Lisa? All right, seeing none, then we're gonna move on to B, which is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education meeting schedule. And that appears on eight B one. This is just FYI, I imagine. Then we'll move on to the C, a group which are action items. And so I'll take each of these individually. And then we could discuss them once we have moved the motion and we've gotten a second. So I'll entertain a motion on C.
Move to approve.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve new board policy fifty-four hundred Associated Student Organization. It's second reading. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? So all those voting, all those present have voted yes. And I will repeat that each time you have that in a minute. So B, a D is new board policy. Um, I'll just say, action item, uh letter D, is there a, a motion?
Moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve new board policy fifty-four twenty Associated Student Finance. It's a second reading. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Action item E.
Do approve.
Second.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve continuous review cycle. These are the entire chapters, one and two of revised board policies and administrative procedures. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Action item F.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve revised board policy twenty-three forty-five public participation at Board of Education meetings. It's a second reading. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Action item G.
Move to approve.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve revised administrator procedure. AP twenty-three forty-five public participation at board meetings. It's a second reading. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Action item H.
Approve.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve revised board policy twenty-four ten. Board policies and administrative procedures. It's a second reading. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Action item I.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revised administrative procedure AP twenty-four ten board policies and administrative procedures. It's a second reading. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Action item J.
Move approval, second.
Been moved to, uh, and seconded to approve revised board policy twenty-five ten participation in local decision making. It's a second reading. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Action item K.
Do approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revised board policy twenty-seven ten conflict of interest. It's a second reading. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Action item L.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revised board policy twenty-seven forty-five board self-evaluation. It's a second reading. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. We're now on action item M.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revised administrator procedure AP twenty-seven forty-five five board self-evaluation. It's a second reading. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. We are now at board action item in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. We are now on action item O, levy twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six taxes.
Move approval, second.
Then moved and seconded to approve levy twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six taxes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. We're now on action item P, contract with Unco Sheet Metal for HVAC replacement services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Unco Sheet Metal Services. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Now. It's just. All right, uh, I do not believe we have any new business. Uh, but we do have some old business. So our nominating committee, let me bring the board up to date on where we are with nominating committee. So I think the meeting before last, we had thought about a nominating committee that comprised of board's chair and the immediate past chair. And we then filled out what, which I thought was really uh a, a good next step, which is a sort of a survey of what committees and what um liaison groups we would like to be a part of. And so Michelle collected that from all seven of us and sent that to Maria and myself. And then as I got the opportunity to reach out, I wanted to be sure, having taken the Open Public Meetings Law training, that we didn't do something that required a notice. So in retrospect, um, and you're hearing this because I'm sharing it with you for the first time, there's very little uh decision-making, if you will, when you see the scan of what we want to do.
Right.
So for example, uh, we, we have a vice chair who agreed that she would like to in the survey be a chair. So I would move that nomination, uh, or any of us could move that nomination. Uh, I uh did reach out to Jonathan, asked if Jonathan would be interested in being vice chair. And Jonathan agreed that he would uh entertain that motion. So we have the two officers, if you will. And the only area that potentially we would have someone either pick is the president's root performance review committee. Because four of us wanted, pick that as number one. On all of the other committees or liaisons, everybody sort of got what they wanted. And there's actually no change from from the status quo. So we could continue with having Maria and I make that recommendation to the board. Or we could just bring that to the board table when we reorganize, which is required by law to be in July. That follows an election year and have us just decide that in a public setting.
Yep.
Of course. Don't like, okay, so it sounds to me like that would be a consensus and we'll bring that forward. Okay. Um, we now have the item eleven, which is the approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Any extensions? Carries unanimously. All right, we are now at the executive session portion of the meeting. We will have.
We, we are gonna forego executive session. Uh, Jamie was preparing to give an update and in her absence, could be able to give an update uh at, at a future meeting. So nothing, nothing.
All right, then I will just then open it up to roundtable with any we'd like to share, any thoughts you have before we adjourn.
Yes, I'd like to express uh appreciation for everybody's efforts and commencement and the, the students and the faculty. It was amazing. I always find them inspirational and I get the privilege to attend with Indra and Roger the penning ceremony. And I, I would suggest anybody that wants to have a really thoughtful experience, that's great. Um, I'm in, next year I'll be there too. And Indra behaved herself. She was really good. So that was great.
Can, can I make a comment on that note? Um, one of the things we've been talking about, I've talked with some of you individually, but uh, we are so excited about the penning ceremony and there are a number of other opportunities to go recognize the accomplishments and the celebration of our students. So what I'm gonna do is work with Rochelle and members of our team for when these throughout the year are, like we have paramedic in the fall, like we have these different programs. And I'd love to see if we could get boarded to some board representation, uh, essentially each, each of these. I'd make as many of them as I can. Um, but, but if we have both board and administrative representation at. I'd make as many of them as I can. Uh but but if we have both board and administrative representation at each of these, it would be very well appreciated.
Great idea.
It was the nursing, the pinning ceremony, it was so touching and um I sat by another crier, April. They bring tissue.
I'm not saying it for the Roger.
Um their stories are just amazing and just amazing students. Just it was very touching and nice. And then um the commencement Saturday, great. Lisa read a ton of names. April was busy going downstairs and around and reading the cards, but it was beautiful. And um so appreciate all you do for our students, yeah.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll just second all that. It takes a lot of effort to pull that off, both of those. And it's just really impressive that it went as well as it did. Yeah, it's great. Yeah.
Great.
And I would heard that um uh having attended the the commencement with all of us present, I thought that was so moving. And as I think it was uh Randy, someone said it was a happy occasion. And it's nice to come to a place where everyone is happy.
Can I make one suggestion? So it's it's customary, and I think it's appropriate for a board member to congratulate every, but one at a time. When you have two board members up there, you wrestle each other for who gets to get the next student, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was with Pat, so I lose.
Bars.
That's what elbows are for.
All right, well, we'll take that. Um, okay, then I would just want to express my gratitude to my fellow board members. For giving me the opportunity. This is my last meeting as your board chair. And it has been really a privilege uh to be able to be in this role. As I shared with Randy uh earlier today, because the board chair gets to have breakfast or coffee.
Yeah.
With the the board, with the president um monthly, that it's been great to get to know Randy uh in a in a in a deeper way. Because being sitting at the board table, you don't necessarily get to have your finger on the pulse. So I appreciated the the year that you offered to me and I'm very thankful.
You're good. Nice job.
All right, hearing, seeing no other business, the meeting is adjourned at six thirty three.